Welcome, everyone. It is 5:15 on Monday, April 9, 2018, and the Carroll City Council meeting is now in session. Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please note that everyone is in attendance. Our first item this evening is the consent agenda, which includes approval of the minutes of the March 26 meeting, approval of bills and claims. On our licenses and permits, we have a renewal of a Class C beer permit with Sunday sales, Sparky's One-Stop, renewal of a Class E liquor license with carryout beer, carryout wine, which includes native wine, and Sunday sales, Walgreens number 10770, and then renewal of a Class C beer permit with Sunday sales and native wine permit, Riling 71 South. Need a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Haley?
Yes.
Fluschner?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. Are there any oral requests in communications from the audience this evening? If not, we have a proclamation this year on a, this, this, this evening. The Tree City USA Award, and it's the 28th year, and I think, Jack, did you just get that not too long ago?
Yes. We received notice about a month ago, and then they just had a luncheon on Wednesday. I went down to, got a picture taken, and went to their little ceremony.
Thank you.
Yeah.
This is the 2018 Arbor Day proclamation, and it states, whereas Iowa's, Iowa's trees were a significant attraction to early settlers because of their multiple benefits and the beautiful environment they provided, and whereas trees are an increasingly vital resource in Iowa, enriching our lives by purifying our air and water, helping to conserve our soil and energy, creating jobs through our forest products industries, serving us with shade for our recreation, providing our wildlife with food and shelter, and making our communities a more pleasant place to live and work, and whereas within, with the cooperation of all Iowans, the benefits of trees can be passed on to future generations through tree planting and conservation of this renewable resource, and whereas each year on Arbor Day, the people of Iowa pay special attention to the benefits of our trees and dedicate themselves to the planting and management of Iowa's forest resources. Now therefore, I, Eric P. Jensen, Mayor of Carroll, Iowa, do hereby proclaim April 27, 2018, as Arbor Day in Carroll, Iowa, and urge citizens to participate in tree planting programs that will ensure a greener Carroll and a greener Iowa, and to nurture, protect, and wisely use Iowa's natural wonder of trees. Thank you. We'll move to ordinances, and seeing none, we have our first resolution this evening is the Merchants Park Baseball Stadium lease. Bucko Baseball doing business with Carroll Merchants, and Jack.
Thank you, Mayor. Last year, Carroll Merchants team played about seventeen home games at Merchants Stadium. They'll have a summer schedule moving forward this year, and we do have representatives here that would be happy to answer any specific questions. This agreement allows them to play, you know, their games between May 1 and September 1. There's a $1 rent, but this is just something we formalized a few years ago, that we wanted to make sure that we just had something written down, that they have access to the field, but also they carry the insurance and some of the other items that they need for the liquor license and those items, and they are here to, they can answer any questions, give you a recap of last year, and maybe a few new things they're doing this year. But it went very well last year. I guess I have to answer any questions.
I thought it went great last year. I'm looking forward to it now, so.
Yeah.
I, pretty much the same thing as last year. Not much has changed, other than any.
There's one, how about the 20?
Caught him off guard.
Twenty games.
Twenty games?
A little different league change, but basically the same.
Okay.
Weekday, weekend games. We think we'll have an All-Star game and military All-Star game in July. The assistant coach from last year will be the head coach this year. He's got twenty players of the 25 on the roster filled. Housing-wise, we already have seventeen of those players with a place to sleep. Reaching out to local employers to kind of partner with them as well, to not really help them out with the development issues, but keep nineteen, twenty, 21-year-olds busy. The association has hired a marketing person to help us continue to build brand. We're all deeply committed to the things that Merchant Baseball does for the community of Carroll, so. And to Jack's point, the schedule to trying to maintain a clean park and not putting additional resources on the city, we just continue all that and hope to keep building the brand.
Thank you. Any questions? Otherwise, the first resolution we have to have is to approve the baseball stadium lease agreement.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Fluschner?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
And then finally, then, is approval of that permit, which is a new Class B permit for six months, including wine coolers outdoor service and Sunday sales for the Carroll Athletics Association Merchants Park.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Dirk?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Fluschner?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. Our second resolution this evening is the US 30 Grant Road Intersection Improvement Professional Services Agreement, Amendment Number Four, and Jack. Oh, I'm sorry, Randy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Which are.
The Highway 30 and Grant Road Professional Services Agreement with Snyder and Associates was originally signed on April 14, 2014. Since that time, it's been amended three times to include, or to include services necessary to complete the development of the Highway 30 and Grant Road project. Following a ward of the contract, it was determined that now we need a, an asbestos inspection of the bridge in order to get a DNR demolition permit to demolish the south end of the bridge. So we have prepared a fourth amendment that includes the services necessary for an asbestos inspection of the bridge. And that, the amendment is included in your packet. It does include those services at a fee of $3,500. I've included in the memorandum the original agreement and amendments as far as costs, the total estimated project cost, and the estimated funding for the project. The funding is short a little bit currently, and that's anticipated to be from the tax increment financing. So unless there are any questions, I'd recommend passage of the resolution approving the Amendment Number Four to the Professional Services Agreement.
So if they find asbestos, are you going to, if we have to come back again for an amendment for removal of that?
For mitigation, yes.
Would the engineers not have looked at that before?
It's not an issue that impacts design. It impacts construction, and that's when the, that's what triggered the permit application to the DNR. That's why it came at this 11th hour.
Any other questions for Randy?
One question on the, on the motion.
Yes.
Does it include $3,500 in there, price in there?
I think so. After a couple of years ago, we had that. So the amount will be in there. If there aren't any more questions, I'll need a motion to approve Amendment Number Four to the Professional Services Agreement with Snyder and Associates Incorporated for the US 30 Grant Road Intersection Improvement Project for the amount of $3,500.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Seaman?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Fluschner?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. Our third resolution this evening is the CAT grant application for the Carroll Public Library renovation project, and Mike.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. For the Carroll Public Library project, the city is planning to apply for a community attraction and tourism grant, or CAT grant, through the Enhance Iowa Program in the amount of $660,000. The CAT program is designed to assist communities in development and creation of multipurpose attraction or tourism facilities in their communities. This program does help communities position themselves and take advantage of economic development opportunities and tourism, and to strengthen a community's competitiveness as a place to work and live. The CAT grant program has provided over $19 million of funding to 52 libraries in Iowa since 2002, and grants have improved between $50,000 and 1.2 million, with an average grant amount of just over $350,000. The program itself is designed to really provide grant amounts between 10% to 20% of the total project cost, and so we believe the $660,000 amount is an amount that will be successfully funded. This round of CAT grant applications are due April 16. I think I said the 15th, but they've changed that because the 15th lands on a Sunday, but just note that. This morning, I would note that the Carroll County Board of Supervisors did approve a motion providing matching funds for the grant in the amount of $5,000 per year for five years for a total of $25,000. Attached to the staff report is a resolution supporting the application, and has requested the mayor and council consider approval of the resolution, seeking the community attraction grant for the Carroll Public Library project in the amount of $660,000. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the council has. Thank you.
Have they, they've approved money for libraries before, I think?
Fifty-two projects in the state of Iowa.
Fifty-two libraries?
Yes.
Just fifty.
Fifty-three, okay.
I think that was a typo, but it's 52. Sorry.
So this is just all we have, just, we just support the application, correct?
Correct. As being the applicant and noting the dollars, the city is already committing to the project of both the $3.8 million referendum and then $500,000 in local option sales tax.
Jack, didn't we have a CAT grant from, for Merchants Park?
Yep.
Any other questions?
I, I just want to voice, we all received the one email from Mark, and, but I've heard from other people also, just verbally, and I told them I, I would voice their concern. I see where they're coming from. I understand. People are concerned that we're moving away from what we promised before the referendum. And we had information at the city's website, frequently asked questions, and one of them was how will the library be funded? And I, I just think these people need to be recognized. I, I agree. Our word should be good, and they're concerned that we're moving away from what the, the funding mix that the city promised before the referendum. And once the referendum is over, now several things have changed with the project, but this funding mix is a concern to many. And I mentioned it before, when we moved away, this is morphing. I, I think our word should be good, and I think people who have that concern need to have a voice at this table, that this is not the funding plan that the city promoted before the vote. Thank you.
Gene, did you want to address?
Yes, Gene Ludwig, just local resident. Yes, I wanted to comment on, on the promise too that was made, that we would be using philanthropic grants and monies from private locations rather than more taxpayer dollars. These are taxpayer dollars. Granted, they come from a variety of areas, but that wasn't what we were supposed to be doing. We were supposed to have the taxpayers represented in the $3.8 million and not going back after more tax money, some of which will come from Carroll County. Yes, it comes across from the state as well, but we are not living up to what we, what we were promised is private philanthropic grants as opposed to more taxpayer dollars.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just, I know we have used these funds before. I think White Rock Conservancy had done some. I think they've gotten some down at Templeton. The City of Carroll, the Aquatic Center, we used it there. White Rock Conservancy got twice, they got 1.7 million at one time and 400,000 not too long ago. The Glidden Swimming Pool, the Carroll Depot and Courtyard, and a Recreation Center even got 400,000 at one time. So they've used these grants before for the purposes of libraries, so. And I think that's what this stuff is designed for, so. Brief review.
I'm agreeing with everything you're saying, so you could just keep going, of course. Doug Burns, Vice President of the Library Foundation, and we spoke with the supervisors this morning and went through a lot of this with them, so I guess we could have an echo and relitigate it, but I just want to make sure that there's no mistake or confusion that, you know, tonight's vote is not a vote on, on the destination. We're going to get to 2.5 million. What you're looking at tonight is just how we get there, the route we, we seek to, to follow. So, you know, there's a limited number of philanthropic dollars out within the community, and we believe that by, you know, seeking this grant, that any money that we can get from outside of Carroll County is money that we, we don't have to get inside of Carroll County. So when we went and got $100,000 from the Hyder Family Foundation in Omaha, I was thrilled and, and made my first call to the Library Foundation to let them know that we had that money available. But right after that, I called St. Anthony Regional Hospital, indicating there's potential for them to access that, that source of funding, and that was $100,000 that we weren't going to have to go out and, and raise. So I think they're principled positions here on, on many sides. You know, some people would argue that there should be no tax money involved because, you know, you can levy taxes to, to build a library, and others would say it should all be, be private money. But right now, we're in a situation where, you know, we can access the state money, as Mike pointed out, 52 cities have already accessed it for libraries. Another reasonable principled position is that the state shouldn't be funding CAT grants, but this isn't the time or the place to take that issue up. I was at the legislative forum on, on Saturday, and nobody told Brian Best or Mark Segabart, nor have I ever heard anybody tell our local legislators that they should vote to deappropriate or deauthorize or kill the CAT grant program. So if we don't go after this money, if we don't make this, the $660,000 application, it's not like the state is going to send $660,000 back into the general fund or give everybody in the state of Iowa, all 3 million plus of us, a, a tax rebate. The money will just go to Sheraton, it'll go to Creston, it'll go to Adel, or God forbid Waki, which is seeing explosive growth, and, and it won't come here. So I, I think this is just a logical decision to move forward and try to bring money into Carroll. If we're able to do that, then it, it's not just a vote for the library, but it's a vote for Kemper, it's a vote for St. Anthony Regional Hospital, it's a vote for New Hope Village, it's a vote for all of our churches, because there'll be more philanthropic dollars to flow around in the community if the foundation doesn't have to knock on as many doors or businesses as we otherwise would. So, thanks.
Thank you. The, and this is just an application. It doesn't mean, I don't think there's a guarantee that we're going to get it.
No.
So anyway, it's just a application going in.
When you look at the guidelines for, for 2018, only 30% of the total CAT grant money is given to cities of 10,000 or less, so it's, it is highly competitive. You make a good point there.
Just briefly, CJ, we got, I know we got a, we got a meeting afterwards, so you got...
Just, I was going to say, CJ, now, I was from Carroll, and when the CAT grant was born, I was in Des Moines, and so I was there, and looking at all of the things that you had in this library application is great because it's public, private, and, and both public, the city and the county. We looked at all of those things, and all those things were to be a part of it, so that's why it is a part of it. And so it is for Carroll and Des Moines.
Yeah, I've got the frequently asked questions, and I found all the stuff that Carroll has gotten before. Thank you. Are there any other questions for Mike? If not, I need a motion to support the application for a community attraction grant for the Carroll Public Library project in the amount of $660,000.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Scotts?
Yes.
Fluschner?
Yes.
Seaman?
No.
Dirk?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. Our fourth resolution this evening is the Professional Services Agreement, topographic survey services, Northeast Park, 2018, and Jack, please.
Excuse me. Thank you, Mayor.
Sure.
Council, at the February 13 meeting, approved the master plan process that we're using out of the Northeast Park to look at enclosed playground, possibly an enclosed baseball field, Miracle Field, you've heard. Obviously, that hasn't been brought to the council for full support, but this is a project that has a lot of interest in the community. And part of this master plan, after we had gotten into the plan, the engineers at Shat Hattery mentioned that they really need a topographic survey so they can determine locations, playground equipment, field, parking lot, if there would someday be a restroom facility, or things like that. So this, it's something that's needed, that really the engineers, in order to take the playground, that we are going to bid out relatively soon. The fundraising group has met their goal, plus the 50,000, we think we can get a nice playground system, enclosed playground for that cost. But with that being put in first, in future development of a parking lot, restrooms, Miracle Field, we want the playground put at the right level. Possibly could be some sidewalks, potentially put in two, in different places, trails. So this is just something that they need for future development in that park.
So they can map out everything ahead of time?
Yeah.
So that as the, the funds come available to do the other remaining pieces, we can do that?
Yes.
And they'll have the trail system going through there?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes. And we'll have a playground first. We hope to have that this summer, and then we'll be able to tell the contractor, whoever puts it in, the poles need to be right at this level, the matting that goes underneath it needs to be at a certain level. So later, you don't bring a sidewalk in for a parking lot and they're not...
They're not adjusted, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Hey, Derek, just a question. I don't know if you can answer this, but that part of town, we seem to have a pretty high water table over there.
Okay.
Just, like, the water table, that is something that would be discovered in this, or is that further down the road?
No. No. Okay.
I was kind of curious if you've ever run into that before, or, you know, how we address that.
You know, walking around over there, Mike, it's, that farm field is what I think we're on the water is. It seems like when I walked that part, that seemed like it was up there pretty high, but that's not to say you can't. But, you know...
I know, like, on our street, our house and the one right across from us, our sun pumps run almost...
All the time.
Year-round, and everybody on either side of us is dry, so there's, there must be kind of a high line up to that area.
Okay.
It just made me think about this.
Yeah, no, I, I know you're right, though. That land out there is, once they get a lot of the crops off, it's pretty muddy out there in the middle. Any other questions for Jack? If not, I need a motion to approve the letter agreement with Shat Hattery for the Northeast Park Topographic Survey, 2018, for the total architectural sum fee of $2,500.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Seaman?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Fluschner?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. Oh, sorry. Thank you. Our last item on resolutions is professional ser, oh, no, sorry, we've got to go to reports. Set the public hearing date for fiscal year 2017, 2018 budget amendment number one, and Laura.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As everybody recalls, we basically just finished up putting together our fiscal 19 budget. So a year ago, we did the 18 budget, as, and many things can change from a year ago from 12 months. So what is required is a budget amendment in order to spend some of the monies that we would like to do for projects. Knowing that the budget is a working document and events occur that were not originally planned in a budget, a budget amendment is required to follow state-of-Iowa code. So what's listed in your memorandum, and then also a listing, listing with dollar amounts that is also included, are the items that would be included in this budget amendment. These were all projects that were part of our fiscal 18 reestimated amounts when we put together our fiscal 19 budget. The projects could have been either something that was planned to be done in 2017 but didn't quite get done as of June 30 of 2017, and then were completed or were planned to be done in fiscal 18, or new projects that just came about of just from day-to-day operations or things that happened in the last 12 months of the city. So I won't go item by item unless somebody has a specific question about any particular item. I do my best to try to answer the question.
So the upgrades to the Channel 6 will occur this year?
We have something planned in the budget.
Yeah.
Will it actually get pleaded, completed or not by June 30 of 2018? We're not 100% sure, but we did allocate some funds in fiscal 18 reestimates, as well as fiscal 19.
Item number seven, Block 10 in Grand Park. I'm not sure where Block 10 is. It's in the alley of that.
That is over by Walgreens. We were doing some leaking underground storage tank testing and monitoring, as well as in Grand Park. They're two different locations that we've been trying to monitor.
Is there an underground tank at Grand Park?
It was with the old...
With the old...
Parks Maintenance Building.
Parks Maintenance Building.
I don't know if it's an underground tank, but maybe one that's out on the ground, but there could have potentially been some leakage, so we're monitoring that.
There were tanks, gasoline tanks.
They're ground, they're ground.
Okay.
My understanding.
I think we'd take them all out when we got rid of that.
And it's a very low risk. We hope that they will forego those testing at some point, but until us determine, we'll continue. The expense is about $2,500 a year. We had one big expense because we had to add in, do some installation of the cores or do the testing, so that was one type of expense. So now it'd be $2,500 a year. They'll come in, do the testing, send us a report, and then we'll hear back from the state if we have to keep doing it.
So it's the DNR. I'm sorry. There's, there's a, a board hole there that stays intact, and they just go into that at different levels, I assume?
I'm so, so, yeah. There's four of them, I believe, around the test center, they didn't do anything in the test center.
Any other questions for Laura?
So tonight would be setting the public hearing date for next council meeting. We'll publish that this week.
So I'll need a motion to set Monday, April 23, 2018, as the date for a public hearing for the fiscal year 2017, 2018 budget amendment number one.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Base?
Yes.
Fluschner?
Yes.
I guess everyone's read the committee report, and hope everyone has made adjustments to their routes on Grant Road, that's the only comment I'm gonna have, is any comments from the city council?
Grant Road's been well received from most people I've spoken with, and...
I think they're just ready to get it going.
Yeah, like, a lot of folks are excited about it.
Question I get is, is what's the traffic flow gonna be like later on, and I'm like, just basically wait and see, hey, I don't know how that's gonna be.
Well, I think Grant Road's closed all, the whole entire time, but they'll make adjustments on thirty.
Well, there's gonna be times where there's only one lane on each way?
Uh, not, that's not planned right now, that was the original plan, contractor changed it, so as far as we know right now, we'll maintain that, now, there will be a short time for some construction on the north side of Highway thirty, both radiuses for Grant Road will be reconstructed, but that, they, you know, they're anticipating that to be like a week long, so it's, it's not a significant amount of time, but it's different.
So what we have now will be what it is most of the time through?
Most, always through the project.
Yes.
That's what we're projecting right now, the, the plan actually permits the contractor to reduce the, reduce it to two lanes, one lane each way on Highway, but, but he's elected not to do that at this time.
I've noticed a few people turning north, and I know we're not supposed to do that, it's probably worth reminding people that that's not something we intend to have people do at this time for their own safety, you can, but there's signs, they're clearly marking it, and I, I don't, people aren't doing it to disobey the law, I just think they aren't realizing that you should not be going north on Grant Road.
Right, is the, the timing of the traffic, like, there been adjusted at all or not?
Well, we removed the leading left turn protected phases from that, and we're working on trying to just balance the timing, it's, really, the signal is there for, basically for creating gaps in the rest of the, the system, so that cars can make turns in the rest of the system, the uncontrollable intersections.
Any comments from the city manager?
Not tonight, thank you.
Thank you, if not, then we'll move to our workshop session, and Jeff, please.
You wanna use this, or do you wanna use the other screen?
Well, we can, I was kinda judging if there was gonna be audience still or not, but we can set up the other screen in the back, or we can, whatever councils, do you want us to set a screen up in the back, or do you wanna just go on the screen?
You can see in the back. Yeah, you'd be able to see it better back there.
I hadn't kind of followed along on my...
Yeah, I was just gonna follow on the computer, tell you something.
Just set it up.
What's, Jeff, what you have, is it different than what's in the package, you know, or?
Uh, I made a few adjustments over the weekend, it's pretty much the same thing, there's a couple of things I've added.
I think Jeff's plan, I need to kinda make changes on the fly, so we can all see those changes.
If you wanna change some language, you can, I'll type it in, and you can actually see it.
Okay. Careful. Careful.
See your shirt is made up front, though? Could've wanted to kill the lights in the back, Mike.
Yeah, hey, Mike.
Hey, Mike, you walked in, Mike, did you wanna kill the lights in the back, really? There we go.
Need some port doctors, Tyler.
Thank you.
Can you read the print okay?
Yep.
I can make that larger if you need to. You okay there?
I think we're good.
Okay, well, thank you for inviting me here.
Thanks for coming again, appreciate your time.
I was expecting to be springtime in Carroll, in April.
We have no cherry blossoms, sorry.
Well, you have less know than we have, if that's a good sign or not, Jeff Shaw, with the University of Iowa, for another month, retiring on May ninth, just so you know, so kinda making the rounds, you know, like when Derek Jeter retired from the Yankees, I go around all the stadiums, giving nice gifts and things like that, so, expecting keys to the Cadillac Escalade, to be waiting for me when we're done with it, unfortunately, I couldn't accept it anyway, because of the gift law.
I didn't put it in the budget amendment.
Hey, Jeff, is your program gonna be continued on, or someone else?
Oh, we could spend two hours on that subject alone. The answer to that question is we don't know.
Okay.
Because of the budget cuts, the Unions, the Unions, I don't know if our program is or is not going, going to continue, I hope it is, we're also in conversations like with Iowa State Extension, maybe they'll take over or something, maybe we can do it in a consortium, don't know, but the follow-up, we had our goal-setting session here in December, one of the organizational effectiveness initiatives that council agreed to was to develop written rules of procedure for council meetings, have that to come here and just help facilitate that process, I don't wanna spend a lot of time on this, I give some, some basic rules, just so you understand, and I'm not an attorney, but your city attorney's sitting over there, the Iowa code does provide that the council shall determine its own rules and maintain records of its procedures, so that's right straight in the Iowa code, and why you wanna do council rules of procedure, hopefully to effectively achieve the purposes of your meetings, conduct city business, making decisions, of course, also to inform the public and to conclude discussion and debate, of course, you have to maintain records, council minutes, and then the bottom three, to regulate and maintain order and decorum at your meetings, allowing for participation in a democratic manner, but providing structure so the meetings don't get overran, sometimes they get asked, well, why don't we just adopt Roberts' Rules? And there's a role for Roberts' Rules, in my opinion, but Roberts' Rules really are not designed for legislative bodies such as the council, you know, there are very specific things that city councils do or require to do that Roberts' Rule just doesn't recognize, like three readings of an ordinance, that the mayor had to veto, how council can override a veto, you know, quorum, votes on certain actions, there's just a whole, a whole host of things, so my recommendation is, and not just me, it's Iowa legal, city legal, that also feels strongly, that you shouldn't just rely solely on Roberts' Rules, certainly for those arcane procedural things, you can use Roberts' Rules, you also have to recognize that Roberts' Rule is not written for meetings of public, you know, the Iowa Open Meetings Law, there's certain things, like on the Roberts' Rule, you can have old business, new business, specifying, the Iowa Public Information Board really prounds upon just having old business, new business, so for that reason, we recommend developing specific rules of procedure for city councils, but still making reference to Roberts' Rules, so in the materials, I provided some basic outline, and what I'd like to do is kinda walk through this with you, recognizing what I put together is kind of a button tape of a variety of rules of procedure from other cities, at least I thought had pretty good rules of procedure, there's North Liberty, Hyawatha, Keahuck, Decora, Cedar Falls, but that's just, they're just for your purposes, for discussion purposes, I'm not asking if you just rubber stamp them, obviously, you're city attorney, city manager, I know Mike's had a chance to look at it a little bit, but it hasn't been totally reviewed, just I did to get going, and what I've done is highlighted areas that I thought were, there is a particular note for policy, council policy, get a sense of where you wanna go, and as I said, I kinda looked at this over the weekend and added a few things, you'll see those in red, just so you know, they'll be a little bit different than what was in the materials, you'll have to tell me how long you wanna go on this, this could go for a long time, Mike said I could go to two or three o'clock in the morning without any problem, I just have to be up doing a session in Hyawatha tomorrow morning at nine o'clock, so as long as I get there by nine, we're all right, okay, typically, have just the authority section as a reference in the Iowa code section, and then those basic rules of parliamentary procedure, you know, those arcane rules, you make reference to Roberts' Rules of Order, and make sure you have, you reference a specific edition, because there's a umpteen editions of Roberts' Rules, and the other thing is, whatever Roberts, addition of Roberts' Rules you do, make sure you have a copy over here, so if a question arises, you can make reference to it, I've seen councils who adopt Roberts' Rules, but you don't have a copy of it, well, what does Roberts' Rule say? Now, meeting times, Mike inserted, if you meet at five fifteen on the second, fourth Monday, and on holidays, you meet on the first business day following the holiday, if that's otherwise, let me know, and then this is what, what one city, I don't know, maybe you do this already, maybe you don't, where the city clerk puts together a, an annual schedule of meetings, and I would suggest that we presented at least on the first meeting in January, which after election year, November election, that would be the first meeting of the new council, is that okay? I did, if you have a question mark there, including work sessions, some cities will try to identify when their work sessions are going, others, they, you know, we don't know what kind of work session goes on during August or September, you want to include work sessions, now, you may have budget work sessions in January or February, should this be included, or just delete it, what do you think?
Probably should say may include work sessions.
Or include no one, work sessions, or, and otherwise, we pretty much go by as needed.
I'm gonna say this schedule may include, is that okay? All right, next, meeting length, this is something you may or may not wanna have, some cities have it, there are probably, minority of cities have it, but this was, I think it was Nevada, where they said, in their move the procedure to meeting, no meeting, council meeting, will last more than three hours without the approval of a majority of the councils who are present, and then if an action is taken to extend the time limit, so going beyond the three hours, a new time limit must be established, saying, well, we'll go another hour, or, I mean, obviously, you don't wanna, you know, if your meeting started at five fifteen, you know, three hours, this gets at eight fifteen, there's, I think their meeting started at seven, you may or may not want to give yourselves a time limit, I just raise that as a point for your consideration.
Would, would that include, you know, sometimes we'll have a closed session afterwards, you know, so then you got a three-hour meeting, and then you got a closed session afterwards, would that be?
Have you considered part of the meeting, I'm sure, because you don't adjourn until after the closed session.
Session, so...
You don't have to have a meeting length, it's up to you, you know, I don't, you know, if you go to midnight for every meeting, that's probably not a conducive to good decision making, in my opinion, though, I don't know how long your meetings go on a normal basis.
Obviously, I think, maybe seven thirty, eight o'clock's the latest?
Yeah, that could be.
And it's not really all that bad.
But it's probably the only time to work later.
I'm not sure if you need it.
Yeah.
It seems like when you put together the agenda, you, you must keep that in mind, because it's pretty simple.
I try to, I think Mike does, I mean, I try to be conscientious about, and if there's gonna be items that I think that, or that we think are gonna be longer, or, you know, if you guys come forward with items, you know, it could be a five-minute or fifty-minute discussion, you know?
Not that we purposely delay stuff, but we do plan our agendas, and tonight's a good example, where we talked at staff, that we were gonna have this workshop, we wanted to try to keep other agenda items fairly light, so we could spend more time on it, so I think we try to do, manage the agenda.
I think it's worked out without...
Yeah, is this, delete this, are you okay with that?
I would.
I'm okay.
The only...
If it becomes a problem, you can always amend the rules.
Right.
The only upshot I would see of that is that, and we have had a number of meetings that have gone beyond that, say, three-hour limit, the only upshot I see is that most of us are more effective when we are working with a time constraint, that said, I don't think that we're going to hit it very often.
No. Okay, well, right now, it's off, and again, you're not agreeing to anything, approving anything yet.
Right.
Okay, special meetings, I just wanted to confirm, the special meetings may be called by the mayor, or by a majority of the members of the council, is that your current policy? Or is that the policy you want?
That's what we had.
In most cities, it's the mayor that typically calls a special meeting?
I think we've used that, I just don't know if we have it written anywhere or not.
It's in our current code.
Is it? It is in your city code?
Yeah.
We saw one in there, okay.
Mayor and/or by a majority of the council?
Correct.
Okay, good, so leave that as is?
How do you get a majority of the council, if you want a special meeting, you have to decide that meeting before, when you're in it, I mean, if we get done tonight, and you all of a sudden say you want a special meeting, how do you do that, you call us up, or?
What we had done once before, well, no, 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 that was for an item on an agenda item, this is the last one I just called, the last one we had, I just called that one.
Since I've been here, there's only been that one.
Well, I could see a situation where the mayor may be gone on vacation, out of town, and you still need a special meeting for whatever reason.
But then the mayor pro tem is gonna be there, and the duties fall onto him, or her.
But if something comes up, and one of us council members wants to have it, how do we, you know, we don't have the authority to call that without a majority, and how do we do that for non-session?
Are you gonna discuss enough?
You know, if you called four individuals, and then you came forward and said, said, mentioned to the city manager or myself, I mean, I mean, that, that way, then I call it, and we know, if there is an issue, I don't wanna, you should be allowed, to me, I guess, it's not just my authority, I think the council should have that authority to do it also, maybe you wanna...
Yeah, it's fine, if that's, if that's how you're saying, then we just call it, that's fine, but I was just questioning, how do we do that, but if you want us to call it, then I think it's fine.
I think if, if somebody felt that that was a prerogative, and called and spoke to, you know, four individuals, you yourself obviously want it, so you'd have to contact three others.
That's good.
Yeah.
Does it need to be a majority?
I would think so.
Because later on, when it mentions agenda items, it's like two council members, but for a special meeting, it would have to be...
Is that how it's written now in your city code? Mayor and/or a majority?
In our, so our city code today says special meetings shall be held upon call of the mayor, or upon a request of a majority of the members of the council, what I was doing now is looking to see what state code says.
Yeah, you're gonna have to comply with your city code unless you amend the code.
Okay.
Until right now, that would be four, for a majority.
I'd have to mention, it's, you're, you're spending funds typically with that, too, or the attorneys here, imagine, and whatnot, so I could see why a majority would be.
And then a written notice of the, of the special meeting shall be given to each member of the council at least twenty-four hours in advance of the meeting?
Yes, don't put the word "may" in there, that's got a different connotation.
Yeah.
Gotta be "shall."
So what about public notification of that, 'cause if it's a, a open meeting, doesn't that have to be...
Right, now, that raises a, I defer to your city attorney, I've seen some cities that basically copy everything from the state code, and they're sitting, putting their council rules, I don't... rules. I don't think that's necessary. You have to comply with the open meeting. And further on, we'll have some discussion about, you know, the posting and sending out notices, but, yeah, you, you have to comply with the open meeting. It's not optional. And then with a, unless an emergency exists, and that has happened, some, you had a sewer main break this morning. You say, hey, we need to hire a contractor right now, or whatever. And that, that may be an emergency. Now, this bullet under here, this had, some cities have this, a lot of cities don't, but I want, it's an important policy point, I think, where a special meeting may be requested by a citizen, but the person requesting the meeting is responsible for reimbursing the city for all costs associated with a special meeting. What does that mean? Sometimes they say, well, I assume you've got a timeline for getting in, like liquor license renewals. Somebody misses the timeline, didn't get the, they want a special meeting to get their liquor license, or a special meeting for some other purpose. But the city said, yeah, we, we'll do a special meeting, but you have to pay for those costs. Another question, I don't, are you, council, you pay per meeting or you pay just on an annual?
Monthly.
Okay. I mean, some city council members are paid per meeting, so there's an extra cost for that as well. But if that's not the case. Other cities just say, no, if we have a special meal, a special meeting, and if there's extra costs, we'll eat it.
I've never been approached by a citizen at all, but I have one. I mean, that's not to say it couldn't exist, but.
We've had, I know when I was in Marion, we'd had it happen. Usually, a tavern, that's, they miss their deadline for the liquor license and the inspections and all of that, but they, and their license is going to lapse before the next council meeting, so they want a special meeting. There may be other examples, which I can't think of, maybe some purchase of something or I don't know, but it's, it's not all that common, but it has happened.
I think we should know what the cost is.
Say it again.
I think you, you should have what the cost is, you know. If it's 10 bucks, they're going to do it. If it's, you know, a lot of money, they don't think about it. Instead of just having it open, I think the cost should be what all these items are to have a special meeting, so the person coming forward would know what that is.
Now, depending on what it is, though, if, for instance, you have to have an attorney there or a consulting engineer, the costs are going to be a lot more than just the publication cost.
But I think, I just think that citizens should know what that cost is going to be to require a special meeting.
You probably give that person an estimate while you think it might.
Or we just don't add it, I guess. You know, otherwise, then you're, you're still getting in a, an estimate. You could put a specific $300 amount in there, but by the time you get an engineer here, and if they're here for an hour, that's probably be another 150, 200 bucks. So it's going to be hard, be hard pressed to.
And another.
And if they don't pay.
The other approach is, a citizen can't request a special meeting. Say, you got to, you have a meeting, is this whatever it was?
Right.
Second, fourth Mondays, that's it.
I guess.
The council could ask for a special meeting, but not.
Yeah, and so I, I thought that more of that special meeting was designed for if there was something real pressing within the community itself, such as like a huge water main break, or a, the water tower fell down, or there's a, something clogged up in the sewer system, that we need to do something. I, I see it more of an emergency type thing.
Yeah.
Very rarely have we ever called for one.
And you haven't, if this has not been a big issue in town, if you haven't had very much experience with it, maybe it doesn't need to be in there either. I know this has been an issue in other communities, and something, you know, the failure on the citizens' part to plan for, does that constitute a, the council's emergency?
Jeff, could you also add some language in there with the, with the approval of the mayor? You know, if the citizen requests it.
Yeah.
And tap on, when the mayor is a second gatekeeper.
Mr. Burner, is that, is that perhaps in there, as it says, special meetings may be called by the mayor or a majority of the council members versus a special meeting may be requested by the citizen? They can ask for it, but they can't.
Call the meeting, correct? Well, I, I think that might be my point.
Sure.
Is that the mayor could say, hey, we don't, we don't necessarily need this, this particular night, this particular week. We can have it next Monday at our regular meeting.
A special meeting may be called by the mayor upon request by a citizen, and then still have the citizens responsible for the costs? And we say citizen, that would include a business too, I assume.
Right.
So the person needs to contact the mayor, then that's the contact person?
Or, or staff, and we, we make those connections.
Yeah, let the city manager know, but then the city manager would contact the mayor, I would assume.
You know, and I think on your point, Laverne, on estimating costs, I mean, I think we could come up with an amount for publications and attorney fees, but then I would, I would put a caveat on there, you know, other costs beyond these normal costs, because that would be our normal, I mean, for example, you're a retainer for regular meetings, but a special meeting, we would pay you above and beyond. And publication, we would, we'd have the meeting minutes at a minimum.
What if the ma, what if the city attorney is not available for a special meeting? Are we legal to have a meeting without him here?
Yeah.
We're fine with that?
It's just taking advice if we're going out on a path. The rest we take.
It's legal to have it. It's not, I'm not sure if it's always advised.
It's not advised, but I mean, I'm seeing a case where that could happen, where he's just not here.
And, and there's going to be a time. Dave's going to go on vacation.
Do you do those?
Nah.
Nah.
Not attorneys.
Again, I guess, you know, I look at that, I could just see it being a Pandora's box. I, that's what I see it, just adding it in there. I, I don't know.
Which part do you mean?
Just the whole thing, the special meeting. You know, even, even if the, the citizen has to have the mayor do it, I, you know, I guess if, if a citizen came forward and asked myself, or, you know, one of you guys, is there, there's, there's still recourse, the citizens could still come forward and ask me, and I could still call it.
Well, the word "may" in there is important.
Yes.
This is "may be called." That means you don't have to say yes.
No, but there's also the, the council person with three others can do the same thing. So they don't just have to come to the man. If, if someone came to you, Jerry, and, and you thought that their purpose was important, you felt it was necessary for a special meeting, you could call up three others, council people, and say, hey, look, this is a.
If you said no.
Yeah, I said no.
Right.
And I would think, if there was anything pressing, somebody would contact any one of the city staff, where it was, say, hey, I can't wait till next meeting. What are my options? Well, let me address you to a council member, let me address you to the mayor, you know. I think we'd walk through that, without necessarily having it.
And I think if someone did that to me, I'd probably call each one of you individually and ask for opinion, and get something, and at least then, you know, I guess that's what I would just do on my own.
To me, the only reason for this paragraph to exist is to inform the citizen that they may have a cost associated.
A cost, yeah.
Leave it as is for now?
My opinion is there's got to be some type of cost. And there might be just one of six of us here. I think the public needs to know what the potential fee will be.
You mean a set, no, no.
Well, attorney fee and whatever related cost. And then if you have to have somebody else come in, then that's over and above, but they should know a basic cost, what it's going to be to call a special meeting.
There's so many variables.
I find the first sentence to be redundant, favoring it being taken out, and then the person, a person requesting the special meeting is responsible for reimbursing the city.
If you do that, hang on, because like you say, you can infer the first sentence from the first sentence in the paragraph above. Well, you could just add a, say, if a person requests a special meeting.
Then it'll be.
Gives us, I mean, if a set of charges.
Citizen.
Mr. Burner?
Otherwise, we're going to be paying for it.
Right.
Well, his fee will change from your.
Oh, I know, his, yeah.
And we have to go back and change that.
Not a pair of us, but does that make sense to you? Are you just looking?
And I'm fine if you.
No, I'm just, I just. Take my first. No, I, I really, you're not changing anything, but if a person does request it, or a body does a business, then there's a cost associated.
I think fairness, you have to advise them that there will be a cost.
I agree.
Associated.
But I don't believe that first sentence is necessary, given the previous paragraph. It's still going to go through the same process.
Well, you got that first sentence, and just if a person requests a special meeting, they're responsible for the cost. And I think as a matter of practice, and I think it's a good example, good policy to let them know, you know, it's going to be, cost is going to be approximately whatever it is, depending on what.
And maybe that's a line of, a citizen will be advised of an estimated cost at the time that they request a special meeting.
So you need to change the word "person."
That'd be good.
Into "citizen," right?
Well, what if you got someone that's, you know.
Business organization.
What we were just at, was an example with fireworks this year. When we passed our ordinance, that started the chain of events that happened a very short time window. If something like that would have happened again, if somebody needed to address the council before for some type of permit or something, I, I could see it being somebody from this, out of town, instead of just a citizen. So I think anybody should have that option. And then again, we still have the option saying, no. I don't think you limit to just citizens.
Well, see, my problem with the word "person" is that if you decide, you're a person, you decide that we need a meeting, it says there that you have to pay for it. The way that's worded, that's what I'm talking about.
It leaves out businesses or organizations, other bodies that could.
Whoever's idea was, and most time it would be the mayor.
Oh, I see.
He doesn't have, he shouldn't have to pay for a special meeting.
Yeah, you don't want to construe that.
Well, it makes sense that he would, if someone comes to the mayor and says, I need a meeting, and then he's requesting the meeting.
Then I become the one requesting it.
So when a non-council, non-mayor or council member?
Non-elected?
Non-elected.
Non-person. A non-person.
If a non-elected official.
I'm starting to agree with you, Carol.
Kill person.
You know what? They're going to go through the mayor or somebody anyway.
Oh, I, I know.
And maybe just add to the first paragraph, that there may be a cost, depending on the person.
And your attorney is going to wordsmith this.
Yeah, he'll get it handled. It's too cumbersome.
Is it a consensus that you just want to address the, the cost, as opposed to trying to work that language out?
Our intent is for people to understand that may, if they want a meeting, it might cost them something.
Yes.
You know, we, if, if it's that dire that we have to have one, I think that that, that it's because it's a city issue. And so, city's going to pay for that stuff. But I think a non, you know, if, if it's pertaining to someone's business, or whatever, that, that they have to have it, I think then the cost should be reflected back upon that. Otherwise, they couldn't wait till, I mean, we're, every other week, we're here, so it's not.
Barry, you got what we want to do here? You understand what we want?
Okay.
Okay.
We're out.
Okay.
Closed sessions, and I don't know, do you call them closed sessions here, or executive sessions?
I would.
Oh, okay. The first sentence just refers to the Iowa code sections. The second sentence is just re, it is what's in the Iowa code. I defer to you, especially Dave, whether or not you want to include that in these rules of procedure. Sometimes, there's a lot more than just this in the, in the code, but just to make sure everybody understands, you got it, of the council members or all of the members present in the meeting, you can't take any formal action in closed session. It has to be done in an open session. Whether or not you want to include that in the rules, that's up to you. The second sentence, second paragraph, is not in the code, Iowa code. I think it's really, really important for your own protection.
We do that.
Yeah, a lot of cities don't do that. And, and that's another good reason, make sure your attorney's at a meeting, just to make sure you get the opinion of the city attorney. Because if you rely upon the opinion of the attorney, of your attorney, even if the attorney's around, that protects you from penalties.
Jeff, we need, we typically just do an oral opinion prior to going into closed session. Do we need to put either oral or written opinion?
Oh, I don't think so. I mean, we could certainly request, and we could certainly say written or oral opinion.
Wouldn't it end up being written, because it's in the minutes?
Yeah, and you certainly want to make sure it's included in there, just for your protection.
And it is. We make a record of it.
But if you couldn't make it, I, I would, my, I guess, I wouldn't have a, I guess I wouldn't want to have a closed session without you here, or at least on a phone. If you're, you know, calling, at least then we've got, we'll still be able to ask you.
Or if you had a written, you can rely on that.
Yeah, I still want, if I submitted a written opinion prior to the meeting, if I couldn't be here.
Okay, so it's a written or oral opinion from the city attorney. Council work sessions, here we need some help on, obviously, council may be informally in work sessions, which are open to the public. Starting times will be, and this is, I was thinking about that earlier, will be set by the city manager with the consent of the mayor. That's a question mark. I don't know who determines it now. I don't know.
Really kind of discuss it at meetings and kind of get consensus.
We kind of, you know, and we do our, like in the fall, we have our strategic planning meetings, and I think we kind of just discuss it amongst all of them, you know, for what works.
But just in terms of process, I mean, just like you're putting together your agenda, it's the manager with the consent of the mayor, at least as I understand your process.
We decide the topics, but I don't know, is we decide the date and time of the work sessions?
Well, the last one, I think, Laura, you gave us, gave us some dates, but we had to work around Jeff's schedule at the time.
Yeah, I mean, we set out dates and, and times. We see what works for everyone, because we want full participation. And then.
Right.
I think we brought back a resolution, if I don't, if I don't forget.
Probably not a resolution, I would say we probably.
A motion.
A motion.
But I think we, I think council ultimately took action itself. But certainly, we're going to schedule stuff that works for the council.
I would think, well, you've got it ordered up there, just fine, and period, right, where you had the cursor flash one.
And then Mike suggested also, hey, depending on the number of items scheduled for discussion, just a, you have 12 things you're going to be talking about, you're going to be spending a lot of time on that. And just some, just what are the purposes of work session? And then the discussions and conclusions will be considered informal and shall require formal action to be taken in a regular council meeting. Just want to clarify that. And then the last sentence, again, is it going to be the same as the original council meeting? Work session may be called by the mayor, city manager, or a majority of council, or the mayor, a majority of council members? Who determines when you have a work session? Again, it sounds like it's more of a consensus kind of deal.
I think we have to all just decide that we want certain work sessions, but then I think, Mike, you kind of set some of them up. I think Harold had set some up. We kind of did it with, like, I kind of try and do it so we have a light meeting beforehand. And out of respect for you guys, now, I'm probably not always going to be here, so you still want some control over that.
I think we've seen that before, too, with, with previous mayors as well.
So should I leave it? Work session may be called by mayor, city manager, or a majority of council members?
I don't mind that.
And I'll just move that up to the top, the second sentence. Emergency cancellation due to inclement weather or other emergency shall be automatically scheduled the next business day or evening. I was thinking about that. You know, sometimes you have a really terrible situation. I was thinking about that, you know, sometimes you have a really terrible situation, maybe the next day isn't the best, and, you know, maybe you need a few more days.
Did we cancel for, these, have we, I don't recall.
We had one, I think the weather was real bad, that, like, Mike and I had a discussion.
We, we did have a discussion when Susan was supposed to be.
Girl, right.
Yep, was supposed to be here.
And she wasn't able to make it up, 'cause it was bad, but our weather didn't turn out to be.
We had that meeting anyway.
Yeah.
We had the screen.
But you got a twenty-four hour closing agenda.
And this may not be, you might just look at it as a special meeting.
You said for the next night, it'll be more than twenty-four.
If you had to cancel a meeting, then the mayor has, you know, can, can call a special meeting, you couldn't meet on Monday, or you're gonna meet on Wednesday.
But if you're gonna cancel a meeting, like a five o'clock meeting, you're probably gonna cancel at two or three o'clock in the afternoon. You got twenty-four hours. You know, the next meeting's gonna be more than twenty-four hours away, so you don't even need this.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, I'm not sure, I'm not sure this is needed. I took it from another city. I can, you wanna just delete this section?
Say, say it again, Laura.
If you're gonna cancel a meeting by five fifteen 'cause of weather, you're probably gonna do it in the middle of the afternoon or something. All right, the next meeting would be like the next night, that's more than twenty-four hours. So when you cancel it, schedule the next meeting, and you're in compliance of twenty-four hours, it's gonna be like twenty-seven, twenty-eight hours for the next meeting. You're not gonna cancel it at five fifteen.
No, no.
Even if you cancel it at five o'clock and set it for another twenty-four hours, you're okay, you got twenty-four hours and fifteen minutes.
I, I agree.
I think just scrub it out of there.
Or just take it off.
Yes. You're okay with that, just take it off.
Anybody else have a problem?
Presiding officer.
The only thing that is, is, we're, we're trying to get, you know, rules established, we all know that that is, but the next person that comes in will, may not necessarily know that. I guess I'm looking at this also for future councils, future people that are here.
But you don't wanna lay like it though either, I mean, if you, if you called the meeting today and it's automatically set for tomorrow, and the weather, and it's based on weather, and now tomorrow the storm's just bad, and you have to cancel again, this kinda locks you into that, those parameters, whereas if you cancel it, maybe determine, okay, the business can wait for two weeks, or no, we do not have to have another meeting or so. If you cancel, it gives you those options, it doesn't lock you into the set format.
And you still have the authority under special meetings, you still can call it as.
Or, or maybe reschedule for the next business day. Like I said, just, it, I guess, like I said, I'm looking at it for in the future, for the, in the next four years or eight years, or the next round of people that are sitting here, they have an understanding of what an emergency cancellation could, could be.
I'm also thinking, did we have.
I would hope so.
If you had a public hearing scheduled for that meeting, that was gonna be canceled, you know, so it's scheduled for Monday, but because of weather, you had canceled a meeting, that public hearing isn't automatically rescheduled to the next business day. You still have to publish notice, so you may have to hold that public hearing five or six days, just depending on what your paper, what you get in the paper. So I would be, I'd be careful about just automatic rescheduling, I guess.
So it's okay to make those decisions on the fly if you had to?
You may have, yeah. Okay, presiding officers, mayor, or in the mayor's absence or in capacity, the mayor pro temp shall be the presiding officer of council meeting. That's fair enough, that's the one, that's what your city votes have. However, and this has happened, in the absence of both the mayor and mayor pro temp. Now, I'll leave this, a temporary presiding officer shall be selected by the council members present, that's what some cities do. Other cities have said, right in their rules, the most senior council mem, if both mayor and mayor pro temp are absent, the most senior council member is automatically the mayor, mayor pro temp, pro temp. However, that can get complicated, happened in other cities, and they had two council members, but both elected the same day, or the, who was. So I think just having whoever's there at the meeting select.
They can select.
Yeah, it's easy.
I think they'll be able to do that.
Okay?
It's not gonna happen.
Yeah, that's right.
A quorum, I didn't, to your agenda, do you have a quorum, a declaration quorum?
Yes.
Senator policies.
Okay. So if the presiding officer calls the meeting to order, the hour designated, if a quorum is not present, the city clerk shall immediately inform the absent members, except those known to be unavoidably detained, that their presence is required. Doesn't have to be the city clerk, but somebody.
Police chief.
Police chief.
So go on and scream that.
If you stop and think about it, in reality though, I mean, in our situation, what if we run to a meeting, we expect her to walk away and start making calls? You know, or do we continue on a business that doesn't need to happen?
Just start.
Well, if you don't have, if you don't have a quorum, there's no meeting.
Right.
You can do, you can do certain businesses underneath the quorum.
Correct.
'Cause we've done that before, or we've readjusted it so we can have a vote with the quorum. So do you really want the, in our position, the clerk out making calls?
You know, at the state house, they have a, they have a sergeant-at-arms type thing, usually that's a law officer, I, to me, I'd, yeah. And he's gonna probably be able to find him faster than anybody.
I mean, we're gonna have somebody notified, Laura's probably the last person we wanna do that, 'cause.
It's a police.
She hasn't stepped out, it's not gonna function, 'cause she's the one that does the roll call and the voting, keeps track of the voting, you know, so.
Again, I don't get, again, I think it's a process, is it, you know, the people you know are not gonna be there, somebody's ill or whatever, that's one thing. If somebody just isn't showing up, I think it's a good idea for somebody to try to hunt them down.
My muddy sense, there'll be so many cellphones out around this table, at that point, you won't even count them real quick.
Yeah, but electronic communications is addressed later on in here too.
That's right.
I can sure make this a police chief if that's what you want.
Police chief or his designee, 'cause once in a while, he's not always here for a meeting, so.
Police department. I'm okay with that. Using the police chief or.
We usually have a, an officer up here, but we could, you know, it isn't always the police, most of the time it's the chief.
Laura, are you okay with us taking that off your plate? Just checking.
In that second paragraph, during the course of a meeting, should either the presiding officer or any council member or clerk, city clerk, know the quorum is blackened? Bring that attention, bring that to the attention of the presiding officer, who shall then issue a quorum call. The bottom line is, though, again, hey, you can't, you're not supposed to be conducting business without a quorum. And even if something, assembly, maybe you only have four people at a meeting, and somebody just goes to the bathroom, you've lost your quorum. Okay? Agendas and council packets, council agenda is prepared by the city manager, subject to review and approval of the mayor, is that how you do it? And matters may be placed on the agenda by the mayor, city manager, city clerk, and any two council members in consultation with mayor and manager. Is that correct? Is that how you do it?
The last one, one of the times before the mayor and the city manager asked for four council members to put something on the agenda.
And I should have prefaced early on, you know, when we got the sample from Jeff, Laura and I did go through it, we tried to put like dates and stuff, but like actual procedures, we wanted to have a discussion here at council, um, so we didn't wanna stymie that discussion, so this may not always follow exactly what our procedures are today, so that would be a good, good example.
But I don't think we currently have anything written, I think it was just suggested. You know, we had asked for that item to be on about the library, and the mayor at that time, and the manager asked, well, if you got four people, I'll put it on. And I guess to me, that says, and there's four interested people, it's gotta be that important to get on, that you're gonna have four people vote for it, if it's a possibility. So that's why, that's why we did four, I guess, that was a thought process, but.
Yeah, it's, some cities, just if one person, one council member wants it, it goes on the agenda, others are two or three, you know, do you need to have a majority just to get it on the agenda? That's the question. I will tell you, there's one city I worked in where the mayor was just absolutely opposed to this one project or program, and there were three out of the five council members really wanted it, and the mayor just absolutely refused to put it on the agenda. And that really caused some dissension. Now, the council ultimately passed, they changed the rules of procedure and said, and they made a motion at the meeting to put it on the agenda. But it really caused distrust and, um, really hard feelings between and among the mayor and the council. And you, you just need to have a good policy, if, I don't care if it's two or three, I would think it's more than one person personally.
The problem with what we did was with the four, that we were running into, is four constitutes a quorum.
Yeah.
So now you got four people sitting there together, and I didn't think that was, I didn't feel comfortable with that. I would be, feel comfortable with three council members or two, um, but I, I.
Well, it'd be easier to have a discussion, because people were coming and going in the room, timeline wise. If, if it were three, I don't care, two, three, but three.
Three, I wouldn't mind seeing three, at least that way.
Then it's easier to have a discussion.
With a discussion about things, correct, rather than four.
And I think that four was actually thrown out in haste.
No, I, I know, but I, and, and I, and I got that, 'cause like I said, they were trying to, you know, it was on the fly type stuff, but, so what is correct, and I think there's a proceed, we should have a procedure for that. Like I said, I wouldn't mind seeing the three, like if you three came forward, and we can at least have a discussion, but otherwise, the other person's going in and out all the time, that doesn't make good discussion.
Or even the four hadn't organized to approach you to put it on.
Right.
Would probably be infringing on the, you know, meeting.
Correct. So if you keep that under at least the three, then you can, we can go past that, so.
Are you okay with three then?
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that's fair.
And then items, and maybe I'll defer to Mike and Laura about this, defining items for consideration for improvement, I mean, have the, must be received by city manager no later than noon on Wednesday before the scheduled meeting. No item shall be added to an agenda afternoon on Wednesday preceding the meeting for which the agenda is being prepared, except under emergency circumstances, and as determined by the city attorney.
And that's time we suggested, Laura and I, so we put those in there. Now, our practice in reality, what we plan to do is report, you know, we need a little bit of time if someone has an agenda item, to kinda do a staff report, pull some information together. Our plan would be by noon on Thursday, it needs to be on the city managers to be able to review and sign off on, and then we can put the packet together and get it out Thursday afternoon. So it's more, I, I look at those deadlines as more of, if there's a public is looking to get something on the agenda, that's really the, the deadline, we want that item in.
It's also good information for your department, that's, they know when they have to get stuff into you.
Yeah.
Okay? At the council meeting, council shall consider only matters that appear on the agenda for that meeting, hoping to follow that. Meeting's locked. And a copy of the agenda will be posted on Thursday prior to the council meeting in city hall, made available on the city's website, and provided to the local media and others who have requested to receive the agenda in advance of the council meetings. Now, by state law, you have to provide the agenda for anybody to ask for it. So that's just basically, it's just a Thursday prior to council meetings, does that make sense?
So I got a procedural question there, so it, where it says that the council, the council shall only consider matters that are already on the agenda. So when we open it up to, right beginning to input from the public on items that are not on the agenda, so when somebody comes forward to address this, is this saying that we can't even discuss that item, or is that something at that point, we can formally add it to the agenda?
So typically what I've seen in the past, we don't have it too often, but like, when there's an action item that the public wants, I've seen it, typically the council will say, you know, we need some additional information, we're not gonna make a decision tonight anyhow. Staff, go research it, come back in two weeks, and tell us more about it. So that would be the practice, if that situation happened, I would advise the council to undertake. I can't think of one where we really have had someone ask for an actionable item since I've been here, it doesn't.
Well, you have to be very cautious not to take action on any item that's not listed on the agenda.
Exactly.
So that, that open time is just to receive comments, to say, yes, do we wanna pursue this or not further, or no, we don't wanna pursue it further at that time.
I just, I've never really known that for sure, you know, when people come up there and express their concerns and walk away, it's just dead silence, you know, should we be addressing it or not, but now, now it's clear.
And my, just so you know, when, like on a meeting like this, and then I go meet with Mike on Wednesday mornings, a lot of times he and I'll sit and we'll discuss it, I'll do that with him, and then let him bounce back to you, and if it's something, then you kinda get a consensus of what you guys are interested in doing, and I think then it becomes an agenda item, or could. That's kinda how I approach some of that stuff. You know, lately some of it, just, just people coming up and wanting to complain about stuff or make a statement, and that's about it, so. But I think if it's a concern that, you know, I sit back and think about it, if I, if I felt that it was a concern that we needed to address as a council, then I talk to him on Wednesday, and, hey, what do we need to do to get this figured out? So, that's the way I approach it.
Council packets will be transmitted to the council, no later than Thursday, prior to the council meeting, I don't know if you do electronically or by mail or hand delivery, but transmitted will cover all of that. And council packets shall include the agenda plus all supporting materials, materials. And you have the timeline for, supporting materials must be received by the manager, no later than noon on Wednesday before the meeting, give you a chance to review it, and matters listed on the agenda for supporting materials that have not been received and are not included in the council packet will not be discussed or acted upon at the council meeting. I raised that, but this was a huge issue in another community I was in just a few weeks ago, and there was a real donnybrook amongst the council about that. Some said, if it's not, you know, if we didn't receive them as supporting material, how you expect us to make a decision? And others said, well, this is really important, and we say, well, you gotta wait for the next meeting, you've wasted two weeks. So I wanted to bring that to your attention. I personally would recommend the language where you have it, and let people know, whether it's your staff, or whether it's, you know, citizens submitting something, you gotta have the supporting material as well as the, just the request.
We had one of those, and I think it caused a big consternation and kerfuffle amongst all of us, and I think that we all had to just take a step back, 'cause nothing was written about it, but at least now there's a statement that says, well, you know, sometimes we'll get these requests, some of these businesses, I gotta get this thing turned in next week, and, you know, we need action on it. Well, if you can't, if you knew that, you probably knew that six months ago, so.
And unfortunately, sometimes the biggest abuses are this, or some of the attorney, the specialized, like bonding attorneys. They just bring them, you know, you have their, it's on the agenda for Monday night, and they, you don't get the material till four o'clock on Monday.
And we've certainly lived that, and had to deal with it.
Well, here's a question, just 'cause we're gonna be running into this, and I'll refer to you, Jeff and Dave, when we take bids for interest rates or for when we're issuing debt, the interest rate, I, this, I think it's just common practice maybe, that we don't get the interest rates until the day of the meeting, and then it's presented that night at the council meeting.
Yeah.
But we know that, that, we know that already, not to, you know, we know that, and oh, that's all we're waiting for, we, and we can at least.
But just wanna make sure that's not gonna be in, in conflict with what we're written, what's written here.
I think all the other materials will have been presented.
Yes.
It would be part of the agenda.
Yes.
Yeah, you can say, supporting bids will be received at three o'clock PM on Monday for review by council at the meeting.
Why do we do that? What, what's the reasoning behind that?
I don't know, that's just the way we've always done it, we're working with our financing inter, or financing, a bonding attorney and our financial advisor, and that's just the world of issuing debt.
But, but with the issuance of debt, you have a very short period of time to accept that bid. Because the market. Because the market changes every day. But every sale I've ever been involved in, it's usually like 2:00 PM and...
If we get the bids on Friday, by Monday, those interest rates very well could change.
Sure.
Okay.
Because it comes on a daily basis.
That will be coming up soon.
But that topic though is, is going to be there. That's the last part of the information that we're going to have.
And usually even the documents for the debt, there's just a blank for the company you're issuing it to and the interest rate. Or the amortization schedule.
Do you try to schedule your other type of bid openings several days before the, so it will be included in the packet?
Yeah.
Okay, that's good. But I know some cities will take, take bid, do, receive bids on the day of the council meeting. And sometimes council members get upset about that because, hey, we haven't had a chance to even look at this yet.
So but the majority information of the topic should have been in the, in the packet. And all you're basically waiting for is that one number, you know.
Do we need to include something to that effect in here? Because I'm okay with the language other than, or do we even need to do that? If bonding and borrowing and such.
The majority of the supporting documents are going to be, and that's a, that's I guess what I'm reading.
Well, one, one thing you've got here, because I'm thinking too, how many times we come up and there's that paperwork laying here. We get handed out something by a presenter, the word all.
Yeah.
Agenda plus all supporting material.
That's my, my concern too.
Yeah.
Okay. Is that, that precludes your having the majority of it and it's all it's all.
Plus supporting material, then just, that'd be better if you just put that all?
Get a little wiggle room anyway.
Because you're right, there's some stuff that gets presented the night of.
So like the legal definition, you know, you go may, shall, all, that's everything, if they are correct. So you wouldn't be able to essentially do that, yeah.
And again, also go through this draft, I certainly recommend Dave and Mike and Laura and I review it carefully. And you can do some, there may be some things, other changes you may want to look at.
I just got a small one here. It says no later than Thursday prior to the council meeting. Is there a timeframe on Thursday or is it midnight Thursday or? Because if it... And we did leave it, we did leave it purposely vague in that regard. We will post, it will not be midnight, but I could see a scenario at some point where...
Where we're scrambling to get it out before five, before we close offices.
Yes. It's not, it's not the norm, but it, it does happen from time to time. I'm usually the, the offending party. I just didn't know if you meant like the end of the business day or midnight. Midnight's fine. I left it the way it is, so it could be midnight. Okay.
Eleven fifty-nine, fifty-nine seconds.
I want to see it till the next day.
Well, that's not my problem.
If it was at five o'clock, then we would be able to review it Thursday night. But that's fine.
I just, I just don't want a hundred-page booklet coming to me on Friday at midnight. And I have Saturday and Sunday to have to review all that. I guess that's what I'm trying to avoid.
Staff will...
For special meetings, the packet, agenda, council agenda and council packet are not required to follow the same procedure. Makes sense if you have a, again, emergency situation. Order of business. This is to develop your council meetings. And I say that general rule is shall be as follows. That came from Mike.
Yeah, and the only thing we added in here that doesn't follow our rule of procedures is approval of the agenda. And I, I only added it because it was on your list you originally sent Jeffed. And I thought it was a potentially a good idea.
Yeah, and I will say some councils don't do that, others do. I don't know if there's any legal requirement for that, but, but some cities, it's just, not just cities, but school boards and a lot of other agencies who have approval of the agenda, approval of the agenda.
Ultimately, it's the council's agenda, so that's why I suggested.
What, what would be the purpose of that? Again, that's, I guess...
I think the big thing is, is when we move agenda items around to some schedules. It would just be a prompting at least for that.
Or if you want to remove stuff, you could do that.
So, oh.
Well, that's dealt with below about moving things around.
You can't add stuff, you can certainly remove stuff.
So the way it is now, I think it would generally the mayor, if we have someone that's going to, can't wait or needs to present something right at 5:20, you know, I'll move things, right? Is that the mayor's prerogative to be able to move things?
Well, that's what that, that second paragraph, and that may have to be changed, with the consent of the council, any agenda may be considered out of order at the request of a council member or presiding officer. You may want to just restrict that to the presiding officer. If A council member wants it, then they can, and that's, it's up to you how you want to do that. Usually it's up to the mayor or the presiding officer to say, well, we've got so many bills in the audience, we'll take them first. Even though they're item twelve on the agenda.
Right, that's, and then that's, we've done that in the past where we've had someone here.
Yeah, it's very common.
We have people that come from Omaha or Des Moines. And if, you know, that meeting's going to last until seven o'clock, you know, I hate to make them sit around and wait.
Yeah, I would certainly recommend it. Just a question whether it's just at the present, is it the decision of the presiding officer? Or should any council member have that decision? Or you could say have a majority of the council.
Say, you're on the meeting, Mr. Mayor, the mayor is.
Yeah.
I would say that the person presiding.
The presiding officer, yeah.
That's how I do it. Now, a legal question, when we switch stuff around, is there any legal grounds that somebody was going to be there for a certain part of the meeting? And because we adjusted it, they missed it? Or are we liable for anything like that? I guess that's why I'm asking if maybe we need to approve the agenda, especially if there's a change like that, just to basically put that on the record.
So like a council member, maybe inferring that a council member might be late?
No, I'm thinking if, if a person from the public wanted to be there for a certain portion.
Oh, 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 okay.
You know, and if they're reading the agenda and they see it's later on, so they plan on coming a little bit later. And then we take the agenda out of order and put it first. Are we subjecting ourselves to any liability by doing that? So then if we come back and approve that, you know, make it a agenda item that we approve it to take it out of order, is that the right thing to do to protect us?
I, I understand where you're coming from. My belief on that would be that we're publishing the time of the meeting and thus that's the time the meeting starts. Now, it's just my opinion.
Doesn't mean things are going to follow with the order, it just means that's the time the meeting's going to start. And, you know, like some individuals, they're here right away before the meeting, so they know that that's on there. You know, some of the stuff may take 20 seconds, some of it may take five minutes to get through. I try to get everybody else some time, but...
There's no, there's no timeframe for each agenda item?
Yes, not, that's what I'm wondering, is if, if we open ourselves up to any type of liability.
You don't have a timeframe, because you could have something that you thought would take a half hour, took five minutes. Now they're late.
Well, I, I completely agree with you.
As long as you don't have a timeframe for each agenda item.
You're looking for a legal perspective, I understand.
That is a good question, but I don't think, I don't think the city would have any, any sort of liability in that regard. And the notices are, are properly provided. I, I think that's our requirement.
Okay? Consent agenda.
Or one other, and I got thought of this too, Mike, when that, back in that oral request thing. I mean, if there's something that I think of a council person may, and I should have said that too. I always do it, but if you see, you know, someone comes up and offers, has a complaint or something, feel free to talk to Mike too. If you feel like it's a, it might be something that we look at. I always do, I always go with him, but I think if, as council people, feel free to talk to him too. I, I would hope you would do that same.
And we try to get the draft agenda out, just in case there's something we're missing if there's additional discussion that needs to happen. I think that's important because again, it's your, your guys' agenda.
You know, on, on that note, do we open, and Dave and I, sorry about that earlier, switch brothers. Do we open ourselves up to liability if we engage in dialogue with someone?
We're going to talk about that later, it's going to come up.
Okay.
We'll give Dave some chance to think about that.
How about the approval of the agenda?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We decided, yes, no?
I don't see how I can do harm by doing it. I think we're better off actually having it.
I don't have any problem with it.
Okay?
So we would have to, just so I'm, so we would have to have a, a motion to approve the agenda?
Yes.
Okay. With, what if I, now what if we needed to make changes? Would it be, I need a motion to approve the agenda with this change that this report is, got to come before we start anything else?
Yeah, you'd say a motion to approve. And usually somebody, maybe the city manager will say, well, you know, item number five, we have somebody here and say, well, motion to approve the agenda, subject to moving item five to number three or whatever.
Okay. You know, the other time I've seen it come up is where there's been an item on the consent agenda and someone wants to talk about it for whatever reason, they will take that opportunity to pull it off the consent agenda and put it on their regular agenda. Now, we...
Perfect segue.
We don't use consent agenda in Carroll. We don't put a lot on it. I've seen other places where we put a lot of stuff on the consent agenda.
Well, let's talk about consent agenda. First of all, who determines what's on the consent agenda? I assume would be the same process as developing the agenda, which would be the city manager, subject to review and approval of the mayor. And any item placed on the consent agenda may be removed at the request of the presiding officer or a council member prior to the time a vote is taken on the consent agenda. And such removed items shall be considered and voted upon separately in the usual manner, okay? Anybody can say, you know, that item under the consent calendar, used to be anything sort of motion to approve bills, we need to talk about. In essence, any one person can ask for that, okay? And then all remaining items on the consent agenda shall be disposed of by single motion to adopt the consent agenda, which shall not be debatable. That's the standard rule. You don't debate the consent agenda. If you want to discuss something, remove it off and then you can have that discussion. And as doctrine, the consent agenda affirmed to vote of all council members present and same has, has the same effect as separate vote on each item, okay? And the issue of how, what do you, what do you put on the consent agenda, I know that can vary a lot. Some cities I've seen are really aggressive, they'll put ordinances on the consent agenda. I would never go that far.
I won't do that. I've tried to sneak a resolution on once.
Okay.
The, the, Jeff, I, you know, there, we, we have a budget and we approve a budget. We have items that we have in there that, like a, like a police car or a mower. Are those things that, you know, we know that those things are going to be done? And the bid comes in and it's under the budget of what's, what we had voted on. Is that a consentable agenda item?
Well, it's certainly consentable, it's just whatever the council, you know, some, just because it's in the budget doesn't mean you necessarily have to approve it. Sometimes you have four or five bids on a particular item, you have to debate, yeah, we want to buy a new police car.
Yeah.
But do we buy it from, you know, the, the local dealer or the Des Moines dealer or whatever?
Did you watch last meeting?
No. But I've been there, done that.
So to your point though, if it, if it is allowable, but it's something that one of us wanted to discuss, we could...
You could pull it off.
Right.
You know, there, there's some of those that I look at and it's just, we, that's what, we, we had that discussion during the budget meeting. And, you know, we hashed it out and we approved the budget. I guess to me, I'm looking at that going as, and the bids are, and the bid comes in and it's under what's budgeted. I don't have, I guess, a problem, no matter where it comes from, getting it done and moving on with it. But I guess if somebody wanted to discuss it, you could pull it off, so.
It's going to be a trial and error kind of thing, probably.
Yeah.
And usually relatively new city managers tend to be pretty cautious about what they put on the consent calendar, for very good reason. Because you don't know what is the standard practice. Council debate. I guess when I change a little bit, debate on items identified on the agenda, took off the action items, we didn't have that. But as identified as ordinances, resolutions or motions, shall not commence until a motion has been made and seconded with respect to that item. I know when we did the goal-setting session, that was a subject of discussion, so I want to just raise. In a lot of cities, I say you don't have discussion until a motion has been made and seconded. There are cities that say, no, we'll discuss it first. I personally think it's better to have that motion and second up. Because if somebody makes a motion that's not seconded, why even have the discussion? On the other hand, you say, well, we want to discuss it before we do that. So I will say in most places I've worked in, they do have, require the motion and second. But as for action items, I say ordinances, resolutions, motions, not discussion. On the agenda as a discussion, I'm obviously, you don't have a motion and second. And then any motion mu- must be seconded, of course, by another member before debates can commence. Motion is made and not seconded, the motion fails. And the council member who moves or secondes motion are not required to vote in favor of that motion. I thought, I stole that from another city. I thought it was a good idea because sometimes there's some, well, if I make a motion, I have to approve. You don't have to, but I thought it'd be nice to put it in the rule. But I do want to raise that question, do you or should you require a motion to be made and seconded before you get, have discussion on a resolution, ordinance or motion?
Well, and our practice has been to have the discussion before the motion. This is something that I, I have a question about and see merit towards having the motion and second before discussion, but that's not been our practice.
No, I think we, it's been, the item is presented to us and then, you know, and, and when the presenter is finished, I'll just, that's why I usually will ask, anybody having questions or, you know, to try and get the discussion going. If it's quiet, I guess I assume nobody wants to say anything anymore. And then make the motion to approve that item. I think it, it would take more time, but it would make it more proper, I guess. It would be more official. If you, whoever presents, then we would have to have a motion to go through with the discussion and second. Now, does everybody have to vote on that? Or is it, you have to have a motion and just a second?
Just a second.
And then the debate starts?
Right.
Right. Can't wait to get complicated, you could have motions to them and do whatever on top of that.
So if someone offers an opinion before their motion, are they out of order in some way? And it seems, that seems a little difficult to...
A question, Jeff. The way you have this written, is it your intention that we would, before staff even makes a presentation, there's a motion and second? Or do you have staff, what, what, what's your process?
Honest response is, I was not thinking of staff presentations.
Okay.
Just I'm thinking, well, the staff material has already been sent to council. But if your practice is, well, you have a staff presentation on the item before the motion, we could certainly word that into this. But before council discussion. And maybe you can make it clarified, council debate.
Does that include questions, sometimes, excuse me, Clay will have a question on equipment or bids or something. And I don't see that as debate, but I see it as clarifying the memo.
Right.
And so, but would he then now have to wait for that clarification once a motion was made and seconded?
Right.
Or that would be considered a part of debate, not clarifying the memo?
And that's the great, our great question.
See, I see there's a difference between debate and clarification.
Are we wrong the way we're doing it?
No, I don't think so.
No, there's no wrong.
We just have that side, we'll do it.
I mean, my comment I would say is, in other communities I've been in, I'd echo what Jeff said where, you know, I have seen it where staff makes a presentation, there's a motion to second. And I've even seen it, like to your point Carolyn, where Clay has a question, he'll, he'll make the motion, someone else will second it, and then he'll... And I've even seen it, like to your point Carolyn, where Clay has a question, he'll, he'll make the motion, someone else will second it, and then he'll ask the question.
Then you ask the question.
But I think the other thing, as we write these procedures, and I like the point that you said early on, nothing, you know, just because you don't follow the procedures right, you know, we don't want to, you know, put someone in a penalty box, per se. It's just how do we kind of formalize this a little bit more? And nothing we do here is going to be invalidated.
Well, we're to be a deliberative body and that give and take. And what works better, which approach works better, the way we've done it, or with, you know, how, how can we facilitate? But then I know we need to keep things moving.
I've always felt uncomfortable personally when there's a motion and second and we go to snap vote.
See, to me, it's like, oh, I have to think about this. I want to hear what other people are saying. Like, I would go into.
And that's what I think. You get the motion in the second, then you have the deliberation. Then, you know, a presiding officer says, is there anything else? There is nothing. Now we go to the vote. Because everyone's had that opportunity to really kind of reflect on the discussion, what the motion is at, at hand. But, you know, you could have a, a situation, kind of with the procedures we do now, where two people want a kind of stymie discussion while motion second, we're going, we're in a vote. Hang on.
See, it can be a good, it's a double edged sword.
It is a double edged sword.
I guess, I, I know, I'd just, to make, to be respectful of everybody's time, but at the same time to make sure that everybody gets their questions answered. I don't want people walking away at the end of the meeting going, God, I wish I'd asked that question. That's why when I don't hear anything, I'll, I say what I say. Does anybody else have anything else? And then when I look around and I'm seeing the heads shake no, then I guess to me it makes, let's go to the motion to approve that resolution or whatever.
And I can, I can see that working.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, but I can see it also working where there is a
You don't have that.
A second on the table, discussion, and then
Right.
the actual question if you want.
But I think it makes, you know, it also sets us up to know, okay, now we know we can, now we know we can ask the questions or now we know we can have the debate. By that same token, you have to have a motion to close the debate.
We're gonna talk about that.
Okay.
Well, and this also, sometimes we have altered the motion somewhat after debate.
Yes.
So what do you do then? Then you say, I mean, I, that, they were getting all these rules and it's like, I'm checking, what do we do next? And, you know.
Would that be a motion on that?
Probably.
Yeah.
You're altering the original motion.
Yeah, so then we would have to.
And that's gonna be covered by Robert's rules, motions of men. It's just, you know, in some places, they say, if there's something that nobody's even in support of, nobody's gonna even make a motion or a second, why have the discussion if there's no support for it whatsoever? On the other hand, I can certainly see your point. Well, let's have the discussion first.
We've had instances, however, where we've needed to table things and we, we make a motion and then we have to make a motion after that to rescind the motion.
Oh, you can motion the table, talk about that later, sure.
After you've already made a motion to vote.
Oh, sure.
Okay.
As long as you haven't voted on the motion.
He's gonna remember all these rules, Eric.
Right, no, that's what, that's what, I'm sitting here going, I'm putting all this in my head.
You're in this big book.
The first meeting is gonna be like two items on the agenda, because it's gonna, it's so easy.
Here's probably my biggest argument for leaving it the way it is, is if it fell for a second, is there something that comes out in the discussion that, that maybe changes an opinion? You know, one of the things when I started council, best advice I ever had is, don't have a decision before you come to the table. And that's the nice thing about the discussion, is you learn things through that discussion. Whereas maybe a second maybe wouldn't have come, but through learning from each other, that second would.
I agree. You know, all I ask, you know, after like Jack presented it, I'll, any questions from anybody? And that's, I guess that's where I try to open up discussion on your part, see if you guys have something. But I think if there's a formal motion to, you know, to make the, you know, to have the discussion, then people know what they're supposed to do with the next one.
I'm not hearing a lot of support or enthusiasm for requiring a motion and second before you can debate or discuss it. So my inclination would be to take it off if that's your, and remember, you can always amend these rules, but.
So you want to leave it the way it is, like what we're doing now? Is that?
I'm fine with how we're doing it now.
You're fine with it?
And all we're just saying is, any motion made by a member must be seconded.
Don't worry about not getting a second.
If it's not seconded, the motion fails. And that's standard parliamentary.
It comes back as another motion made if you have a, a failure on it, you get a second. I, I'd give the example of that, we talked about a mower last time you brought that up, reference to, I may have made a motion that we waive our purchasing policy and buy the mower from a local vendor
Yes.
for this amount. And there may have been, there may have been no support for that, at which time that dies.
Right.
And someone else brings up the, the motion that we purchased the, whatever it was for this many dollars, as advised by staff. That's the logical progression that can happen with it. That said, I'll, I'll of course conform to whatever the majority of this council feels. I have no problem either way.
And I don't want to, I don't want to stifle anybody's discussion. I mean, if you've got something else that's better, you know, when we were having discussions with a mower, I'm, I mean, I'm all for that too. You know, that's what we're supposed to do, is deliver. Right.
Okay? That's help in terms of the requiring a motion second before debate discussion. When a motion is made, it will be announced by the presiding officer before debate. Take out before debate, it will be announced by the presiding officer. All that means is, and I'm not sure if that's how you do it or not, but I think it's a good idea. When motion is made, you say, motion by Smith to approve resolution seven eight oh two. And, because a motion by Smith, second by Jones. And especially for the audience, sometimes they get, and the, and the presiding officer announces the name of the council member who made and seconded the motion.
We can't have that.
We don't.
You have them do that.
Yeah.
Not at all.
That, that's done by Laura in our system.
Well, I don't say the motion has been made.
She never says.
You don't either.
She doesn't say who it is.
She said we have a motion.
Well, we can change that to from presiding officer to the city clerk. Although I will say, it's usually the presiding officer that does that, at least in my experience.
That to me makes more official sense.
I, I have experienced that also.
Keep it with the presiding officer.
Well, I might be asking a couple of questions.
But do we need, you're gonna announce.
I have to start writing down whose name it's.
He better, he better, he better not blank out on names there.
Right.
Well, and that's got to stop you from asking now, who made that motion?
Yeah.
They can always ask that.
We've had some ties, aren't saying yes.
And that the last sentence in the second, the presiding officer may invite council members to make a motion. For example, a motion this time would be in order. Because sometimes there's some dispute, hey, well, mayor shouldn't be telling me what to do. And all you're saying is, hey, we've discussed this enough, might be nice at times to have that motion. Doesn't mean they have to.
That's what we do now.
Uh, is it?
Yeah, because I, I'll ask if anybody's got any questions and I look and that's when I'll, I'll make them, I'll put the motion out there.
There you go.
But I gotta have somebody, you know, make it, like, so approved or whatever. Technically, I think you guys are the ones supposed to be, you know, you guys should verbalize what it's, I just have been doing it, but.
The mayor can't make a motion.
No.
I think the mayor pro tem can make a motion, right?
Yes. If the mayor pro tem is presiding.
If the mayor pro tem is presiding, yes.
Yes.
Oh, he still can.
But I, I, yeah, I, I, I'll, I'll look for a motion and then someone will use, so, so move.
You wouldn't have started a routine earlier tonight, Jeff, where the mayor will read the motion and then one of us will actually make the motion or move such. Is that, is that appropriate?
Oh, sure, yeah, yeah.
I think he's still just inviting
I'm just looking.
council members to make.
I'll, I'll look for a motion and that's.
But he explains what motion he wants.
Right.
Right. But sometimes the mayor sends it, hey, we've discussed this enough, it's time for a vote, and you can ask for that motion.
Maybe I should just say, I'll look for a motion and just do it general. I just thought I was helping out, but.
But you are. You, we have benefits.
I think it's faster, no, I think it's faster the way you do it.
That's what I thought. I, I, you know.
Eric, you're basically taking it off the recommendation, aren't you?
Right.
Yes.
That's, that's what I.
Which we all read.
Correct. And, you know, because I guess, I'm assuming everybody's agreeing with it. I'm assuming, and maybe that's wrong, but I'm assuming that if someone was not comfortable with that, they would voice their opinion. And that, you know, and I, and I think we've done that.
Yeah. I think it's working fine.
And those were resolutions, motions, ordinances, items that are just discussion items, you're not acting on. Do not require a motion, of course. And then the presiding officer will announce the item to be discussed and facilitate discussion. Just, again, just for the obvious, you know, we're gonna talk about the, whatever, Grand Road project. General speaking by council members.
Maybe I'll throw out there once in a while, I need a motion, see if something's waiting.
Throw that, I'll, I'll read it from the bankroll of the district.
I know this is one that's usually overlooked, but I think again, especially at a contentious meeting, every council member desiring to speak shall address the chair to request recognition by the presiding officer. Okay? Can't just speak as for, you know, it may have four of you wanting to speak at the same time, the mayor, the presiding officer. I'll say, okay, well, council member Smith, you, well, you may be. And a council member shall confine the remarks to the question under consideration and shall limit his or her remarks to a reasonable length. And I know you're gonna ask me, what does reasonable mean?
I'm, I'm the honorary one who's still back on the, the question. Well, if we have a, a motion on the table, then what is the question? Is this, well, I want to know. No.
I see what you're going back to.
Right. And I don't need to loop us back around to that, that just, that's part of the problem, is that we're throwing out a, a parliamentary procedure to
Yeah.
stick with our, our routine, and that's fine. We just have to define these things.
Well, if you're talking about purchasing a mower, and all of a sudden you end up talking about the condition of a pavilion in a park, that's really not
You bet.
what you're supposed to be talking about. It happens all the time. I understand that. And what's reasonable length, that's always tough and sometimes it can be hard feeling. I was in one city where it's a real hard feeling between mayor and a council member over that. The mayor actually gavelled down the council member because they, the mayor thought, you went on and on, you made the same point over and over again. And the council member thought they still had important information to provide. It caused some real hard feelings between mayor and council member. But the mayor ultimately is the presiding officer to meet. And there are ways to get around it. We'll talk about that.
So Jeff.
The mayor and council members, as well as staff and members of the public, should speak one at a time in a civil and courteous manner so as to be heard by all persons in attendance. And I guess the, the presiding officer may enter into any discussion. In some cities, they say, oh, the mayor shouldn't be involved in that discussion. I disagree. A mayor should, you don't have a vote, but you can totally have an opinion.
Yeah.
So you have to circle back to, to Clay's point about the, the word question in the second sentence there. Could you just simply change that to the item under consideration?
Agenda item. I was thinking the same thing.
Make it, to the item under consideration. Council member may speak.
To the agenda item, or agenda item?
Agenda item.
Item, yeah.
That's good. That's, that's helping to zone in.
Right.
Keep it.
All right. Council member may speak after recognition by the presiding officer and shall not be interrupted except by the presiding officer to enforce these rules.
So before, before we move on, are we going to do that? Do we want to do that? Ask the presiding officer for permission to, to speak or present?
So each one would have to ask, and I guess I just openly ask if there are any questions and let people openly speak. And I'm, usually whoever starts speaking, I have to give them permission to speak?
I think you do it.
Teacher.
Yeah. Silently or not, you don't have, you don't have to always say, mayor, may I speak and.
That's what I'm asking.
I thought that's what you meant, like, we need a permission.
I would say, if you've got four people trying to say something at the same time, you can just by raising your hand or whatever, seek recognition by the presiding officer.
Look up here and I'll just, you know, whoever I see raise their hand first, mayor. And I gotta look, I gotta have, what, was that accurate?
Per form. The only difference here is that we're
Igor.
we're requiring the word point of privilege to be brought into things.
Right.
What's wrong with you saying, Mike, you have point of privilege?
To allow him to finish speaking first.
Right. Right, so that he knows he's got uninterrupted time.
He's uninterrupted.
Well, the point of privilege though comes from the council.
I understand that, but is, is not raising your hand a non-verbal way of saying, I, I would like point of privilege?
Well, point of privilege is the interruption of the already.
It would be if, if Mike's talking and Vern starts to speak up, I could say to Vern, he has point of privilege, he has to finish first. That would be where I'd go with that.
But these are basically from Robert's rules, but the idea of the point of privilege where a council member, they say, you can't, don't interrupt a council member speaking, except you ask for a point of privilege. The presiding officer would, what's your point of privilege? State your point. And that may be just some, the point of privilege is just basic rules of comfort, you know, like, the mics aren't working, it's too hot, too cold in the room. There's a machine and maybe a fan working, I can't, nobody can hear what's going on. That's fairly simple. A point of order is where one of you say, okay, well, he's talking about that mower and it's starting to council members, maybe you start talking about something other than that mower, talking about that park pavilion. Point of order, the discussion isn't on the agenda item that we're, we should be discussing, we're fearing off of the subject. Okay? Now, there is an appeal, there should be an appeal process. The presiding officer makes a decision whether it's on the point of order, you say, well, you're just wrong. You could, somebody could call for a vote on that and, or excuse me, appeal it to the parliamentarian. And I'm going to suggest later on, that ought to be the city adjournments, to be the parliamentarian. And call for the order of the day, that's another, we get back to the agenda. Does not require a vote, but the presiding officer determines the agenda's not been followed. Type in yours.
Yeah, wait. So the presiding officer does the call for the order of the day?
No, that'd be a councilman.
That'd be a council member?
Although I think the presiding officer can also.
What if the presiding officer is seeing it too? Yeah.
Yeah, to say, you know, we're talking about the mower.
If the presiding officer or council, or a council member believes that the council has drifted away, then such a call could be made.
And then during the discussion, the maker of the motion can interrupt and say, I withdraw my vote. It may be that, you know, Clay points something out, say, I made a mo-, or, you know, Jerry made a motion to approve that purchase and afterwards he made that discussion, he said, hey, I withdraw it. And so you can interrupt that discussion for that.
And we have done that kind of, you know, informally. I don't, it's never been a real formal thing. I mean, I think we tried to keep our meetings informal. But, you know, if you made it more formal with that, then I would almost go back to argue Clay's point about maybe having that motion and a second to do the debate. You know?
I would suggest that maybe you might want to bear that in mind as in future.
Yeah.
If that becomes a problem, you may want to look at doing it or, or commending the rules to require that. Public hearings, of course, prior to the hearing, the public, the presiding officer announces the nature of the matter to be heard, declares the hearing open, invite anybody to speak. What I had highlighted there, what I've seen in other cities, is have an order, those in favor speak first, those opposed speak next. I don't know if you've done it that way here or not.
I think we actually have.
Okay, that's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The presiding officer may, with the approval of the council, limit the time allotted to speakers at the public hearing. Got a room full of people, and you say, well, geez, we let everybody speak, and with no time limit, we won't get out of here for five hours. Then we set a five-minute limit or ten-minute limit.
That's how we, that's how we get to some of those long meetings that went over the three-hour mark.
And, and actually, I've seen it up front where it is, you know, it's a five-minute limit at the discretion of the presiding officer, where, you know, they're making valid, good points, we're not going to just cut them at the knees and say, stop. I guess my suggestion would be to make it more formal so that when you're in that debate and you have a room full of people, you're not being accused of kind of creating rules on the fly. I think it's more contentious to do that.
Right, that's, right, that's what I'd want to get away from. Maybe each side has twenty minutes and that's it.
Well, and you, and you may have fifty people in here, but, and it may be reasonable to have three to five minutes.
I mean, is this where that, you know, that no more than ten people can speak?
I don't think you can do that in a public hearing. I think there's actually some court cases that-
Oh, that's, okay, okay.
Because it's a public hearing, anybody-
A public hearing, okay.
Has a right to speak, and I referred to Dave on that, but I don't think you can limit that. You can limit time, and you could also, I think, limit the number of times a person can speak. And sometimes either say, well, you can only speak once until everybody else has spoken, you can't speak a second time, a third time.
I guess I'm thinking about, not those public hearings, but I know just some of our items on our agenda.
Yeah, that's different than a public hearing, yeah.
Jeff, can, can you sometimes say, like, if there are many people speaking, if, don't make the same point-
Yes.
More than once, if you want to bring in something new to add to the, can you-
Yeah.
I've seen that.
It certainly has.
We've done that.
Please don't repeat what other people have said. You can certainly say, I agree with what the previous speaker said, or I oppose to such and so, for the reasons that they stated.
Thank you.
After the citizen input is received, the presiding officer can choose to close the hearing, and then the council may either vote on the item or defer consideration to future being. You don't have to vote on that item, now certainly it's got to be on the agenda if you're going to vote on it. And the council, if the council expects or desires future input, the public hearing can be continued, okay? Now, I added this over the weekend, if no legislation is intended to be taken at the meeting at which a public hearing has been scheduled, the presiding officer shall so inform the audience and will also indicate to the audience when such legislation is expected to be considered by the council. Again, what I've said in other cities, I was in, they have a big contentious public hearing, but the council wasn't going to take action on it, but the public didn't know that. They just let them know, you know, it's just, we're having the public hearing, but the council's not going to act on this ordinance or resolution, whatever it is, until May 7th or whatever.
Till maybe the next meeting.
Just to let them know, just keep them informed.
I'm going to jump back up, the presiding officer may, with the approval of the city council, limit the time allotted to the speakers at each public hearing. Is that then to be done during the public, once the public hearing is declared? If I look and I see there's a hundred people and they all want to talk, then do, is there a motion to the council to limit each person to two minutes or whatever? Is that done during the public hearing? Do you do that before the meeting starts?
Probably better to do it before the hearing, maybe the meeting before, when you set the hearing, when you expect a lot of people. You could conceiv-, I don't think you'd have to have the council's approval to set the time limit, if you want, you could just let the presiding officer set the time limit.
May with the approval of the city council.
I know, that's how it's written.
Yeah.
But you could say the presiding officer may limit, if the council's willing to go along with that, I suppose. Or, and I have it later on, someplace, where it was, time limit for citizen presentations, you could establish a rule that says, is whether it's public hearing or any citizen presentation, setting a time limit of, let's say, five minutes. Now, that may or may not be adequate depending on the issue. And if you only have one or two people in the meeting, you know, it's not a big deal, if you have a room full of people, it's something else. I have seen, usually the larger cities will actually have a, a standard rule, not more than five minutes for citizen presentation. Medium-sized, smaller states say, we're more informal than that, we encourage citizen input, it's entirely up to you how you want to do that. And I, again, I don't know what your experience has been. So, I've been in some cities where a citizen expects to be, participate as much in council discussion as a council member.
I mean, I don't want to give the presiding officer so much power, I mean, I'd still think that, you know, they were voted in to represent the community also, and I guess I look at that and go, the presiding officer may or shall, with the approval, that requires them to vote. And, and it takes the time out for, for that acknowledgement, I guess, I-
I think it, I think it gives some credence that we're all on the same page, too, that it's not just-
Right.
The mayor singling out one issue or one group.
You come across the mayor that really doesn't want an issue at all, and they have the power then to limit the discussion, I don't think that's right either. I think the council, because they're all, they're all representatives of the community.
You know, you're not going to know, I think, a lot of times if a public hearing's going to be contentious or not, until you show up and see the room full of people. And even then, sometimes it's just misinformation and getting through what the issue is. You know, my suggestion is, is if you, if you're thinking if you want a time limit, I would put it explicitly in the rules, allow the council, the presiding officer, whoever, to allow additional time. But I think to try to, at the public hearing, to say, no, we're only going to allow five minutes, is the council okay with that? That's going to look disingenuous to the public that's here. You know, have a clear rule, have a safety valve that allows additional discussion, but I think, I think it, it's difficult to put the genie back in the bottle once you're in the public hearing setting.
Well, perhaps that's back to the point of set a rule and have an exception.
I, I think you, you set a rule and allow some type of an exception to that rule, but just to say, we're going to limit it at the table, that, that's tough to me, I think.
So, allow twenty minutes, but, so like you're saying, allow twenty minutes, but maybe extend it.
Well, you got to give everyone the opportunity to speak, I would allow five minutes.
Five minutes per speaker.
Per speaker, okay.
Up to, yeah, and then the opportunity to-
Address the council-
To extend.
And the presiding officer to, to extend.
I've never had trouble with anybody bringing new stuff to us, but reiteration after reiteration, that's, that's where-
Same thing over and over and over again.
Maybe that's something you put in the rule, that, you know, speakers are encouraged to not repeat other comments, and the presiding officer in the essence of her, to ensure blank may, um, stop speakers when they are repeating positions already stated. I don't, I don't, I don't wordsmith that.
And I'm fine with people coming up and saying, hey, I agree with what you just said.
Great.
Then we know more than one person feels the same way, that's fine.
Yeah, I mean, if one person came up, made the presentation, and then I had another fifty people come up, I agree, I agree, I agree.
Great.
Yeah.
But what wording do we use to keep them from repeating the same?
Let's say we make the attorney figure now. Right, Dave?
How about?
Again, you got to be careful.
Speakers are limited.
Well, they're not, we're not restating the same thing, reading off of a piece of paper, and they're all saying the same thing.
Just something to the effect that speakers should avoid repeating the same point, but could show support.
Right.
Something like that.
Speakers of public hearings are limited to persons for the presentation, which may be subject to extension with the approval of the presiding officer. I could add in there, speakers are encouraged not to repeat what other-
That sounds good to me. I don't, because if, what you'll end up getting is someone is going to come up with a, with a piece of paper like this, and they're going to all say the same, repeat the same thing, I don't want to see that. If they have a different, a new idea, bring that forward as additional information.
Yeah, it'd be better to state it in what you want them to do rather than what you don't want them to do.
Right, what you don't want them to do.
But are, how about at the end of that, a but or before it, but are encouraged to support? I'm trying to think, that, that ballot to give them the ability to support what the previous speakers did.
Are allowed to express support?
Yep, may express support for the previous, for previous statements.
But are allowed to express, there you go.
And again, this is going to be wordsmithed.
Well, let's get, definitely gain the spirit of it.
So, reasonable. Okay? And the, the presiding officer announces the restrictions, of course. Closing debate. Presiding officer has the right to close debate unless two-thirds of those present vote to continue the discussion. And I don't know what you've done in the past, but usually, mostly, mayor can call for, determines, okay, well, discussion's over, let's call for the question, have the, have the vote. If the council, if two-thirds of the council said, hey, we still need to talk about this, we're not done, despite what you think, mayor, you can overrule the mayor and continue the discussion. But somebody would have to make a motion to do that and have a, a two-thirds vote, okay? Also, or in addition, sometimes they, well, the mayor's going, hasn't, doesn't want to close debate, a majority of the council may require a vote by calling for the question. Calling for the question, motion, calls for the council to vote on whether or not to vote on the original motion. And this has been misinterpreted, some people say, if eight council members, like, I call the question, they think automatically you go for the vote. No.
No.
If that council, you have to have a vote on it, the council.
Right.
Now, the vote on it is not debatable. The discussion is not debatable. You call the question, if you have a majority in favor of calling the question, then you vote on it. If you say there's not a, a majority, then you keep on talking, okay? Forms of ordinances and resolutions, it'd be, ordinances, resolutions presented to council in written form. Again, there's some cities where, well, we haven't seen any yet, to have gotten the written ordinance, resolution from mayor, or, not from mayor, from the city attorney. This is just to get away from, hey, you got to get it, you want to see what you're voting on, I hope. You're not like Congress, that votes on stuff like that. About reasonable. And of course, all ordinances, resolutions subject to review and approval by the city attorney as to form and legality. I don't know how you do it, but sometimes you might have staff that prepares resolutions or ordinance, which is fine, but you certainly want the attorney to review them. Voting generally, vote on every motion shall be taken by voice vote or roll call. You don't do electronic voting here, right?
Okay.
And you turn the record, that's true. They clerk jobs. Roll call for all ordinances and resolutions that stay long. Members shall not explain their vote during roll call. I have seen some cities where they, they change that, I mean, it's not required, it's not law. Personally, I think one, you've had, the time for explaining yourself is during debate. Once you vote, don't say, well, I'm going to vote yes because this, that, and the other thing, I'm going to vote no, this, that, yes or no, okay? And any member may change their vote prior to the next order of business. I don't know if you've got a rule on that now, sometimes people change your mind. Typically, that's the standard you go. Until you, once you get to the next item of business-
Your vote is locked in.
How do you do that?
Yeah, I was going to say, how do you do that?
What, what?
Do you ask for a-
You're the first person to vote, and everybody else says something else.
So, it passes, and then you want to change your vote, and you might-
You ask for recognition from the mayor and say, I want to change my vote. And sometimes, I, I've seen it where you may be like the first person voting, if you're doing a roll call, and sometimes it's that, well, I, I wanted to vote no, but I got confused. Especially if you have amendments and things like that, it's, oh, no, no, I, I really meant to vote yes. It happens.
Maybe we should have little green lights and red lights up there.
Well, a lot of-
Some cities do have that.
Yeah. When I go to the League of City things, I ask that, and almost, I'd say the larger cities, they all have that, they press a button and then nothing happens until they all vote, it shows up on board.
So, they don't know who the other, how the votes have gone.
No, not until, until the last one pushes their button, then it comes up on the board.
After the vote is taken, the presiding officer will announce the decision, just saying, you know, take the vote, all ayes, motion, carry. Or whatever it might be.
That's what, your lawyer's been doing that now, so I'll have to do it.
Okay.
Well, no, you don't have to do it, if we'd like to choose to keep having it, we can do that.
After the vote is taken, the city clerk will announce-
We can say the city clerk.
Okay.
See, Laura, you get to keep that one.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Since you have all the, that's why, does it let, because you have all the information in it.
Why change it?
Right there, yeah.
I don't need to.
It's working that way.
And all ordinances, resolutions, contracts, motions, et cetera, requiring council approval of expenditure of funds of any kind of city action shall be conformed with affirmative vote to enact it, not approved. I got that from another city, I thought it was a good idea, because I've seen it, or something said, the motion, motion is made not to put the stop sign at that voting. No, you wanted an affirmative motion. I'll refer to Davis, whether that is something you want or not want. The idea is that you make a motion to do something, or-
Not to not do it.
Not to not do it, because that can get confusing.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, can, can I make a motion to take a, a biological break at some point? You've had me over two hours.
Yeah, well, we'll finish this and then we'll take five minutes.
Thank you.
All right.
Well, that's it, is this a good time for a break? We still have quite a bit to go.
Yeah, I was looking at pages here, so-
And we want to continue the discussion, and there's some kind of big things coming up, but, um, I'd be happy to come out here again up until May ninth.
Let me see the three pages that we've got, and I, you know, after this, if we go five minutes and we finish it, maybe?
How long, how long are you saying? I, I don't have a problem staying.
Yeah.
Is that what you're asking?
I just have to be in Iowa for tomorrow morning at nine o'clock.
You weren't kidding when you said that, two o'clock or whatever in the morning.
It's probably be done by eight-thirty, I, it's just, the next meeting, we've got, since the next, uh, Monday, the next Monday, we have, um, meant the review.
There's a lot, what?
So-
There are only a few pages.
The other, the other ones are examples of other cities.
Yeah.
We don't need to go through.
Yeah, the next one is-
Yeah, we don't need to do the other city stuff.
So, why don't we take a five-minute break, and then, uh, we'll come back, we'll just finish, I think we'll be okay.
I'd rather stay here, instead of having him drive all the way back again.
Because next, next Monday, we, or, the next Monday, we have Mike's review, and that can, that can take an hour, so.
I'm going to go-
I'll send this one for the biological break.
Yes, there you go.
Oops, sorry.